I'm gonna go ahead and start a little early, so at this time, could we have the roll call, please?
Gong.
Here.
Millies.
Here.
John and Nancy both informed us that they were gonna be out today. Diaz.
Here.
Whitlatch.
Here.
Harmon.
Here.
Aguilar.
Here.
Okay, please join me in the flag to our, salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's see, I'd like to have a, I wanna go to a separate item. Wayne and I, I definitely have conflict on two items, okay? That's item number one, and I think item number three, the grape guys. Wayne works at my real estate office, but he has had nothing to do with these transactions. Potentially because I'm his broker, it could have some influence. That being said, there's not enough people, I don't think, to vote. Well, maybe there is.
Four.
Yeah, we got four. So, anyway, our question is, do you want him to step down when I step down? But he has no, really no knowledge of the transactions, so...
There could be some indirect issues, and there is the appearance, since he's your...
Well, the fact I told him his job's on the line, that's a problem.
I know it wouldn't be, but...
Yeah, I wouldn't say that, but, okay, okay. Well, Wayne and I go have coffee in the back, okay. Okay, at this time, this is the public comment time for items not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented, this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the planning commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to come forward and speak at that time for the planning commission consideration. So that all parties have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing the planning commission may be limited at the discretion of the chair, that's me. So, at all times, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record. So, at this time, we're inviting members to come forward and speak out on anything that's not on the agenda, if you'd like to address our commission.
Just before you start the public hearing, I wanted to just make it clear that you had indicated that we're gonna start a little early. You didn't start early, you started at nine o'clock.
Okay.
Just wanna make sure.
Okay.
That could be an issue.
So, this is a public comment time, and those members of the public who would like to come comment on anything that's not on the agenda. Is there anyone? Seeing none, I will close the public comment, and we'll go for the approval of the minutes. I have a motion from my fellow planning commissioners to approve the minutes for October 23rd, 2013.
I'll make that motion, we approve the minute for 2013, October 23rd.
Second, please.
Second that motion.
Roll call.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Harmon.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Epstein.
Motion carried, and with that, Commissioner Millies and I will go shop talk in the back someplace. You're in charge. I'm leaving, honest. I did that just to be annoying.
Except for effect.
Okay, let's move on to item four in the public hearing, for a special use permit, number PSP 13-047, final site plan number PSR 13-007. This is Rudy Decrimagian, I'm sorry if I butchered that, Louis Daniel Chavez, categorical exemption and special use permit to establish a 25-bed congregate living health facility, converted from an existing 2,040-square-foot, single-family dwelling, and expanded with two additional additions totaling 4,581 square feet. This is in a PDM, which is a planned development foothill combined special mobile home zone. The site is located on the west side of Globe Drive, approximately one mile south of State Highway 190 in Springville, and Chuck is our contact today. Chuck, you have the floor.
Good morning, members of the commission. I see it's pretty thin up there today. As you mentioned, today, we're gonna look at a use permit, 13047, which is for a congregate care living facility, and I'll describe that in a little bit. The brief overview of the use permit, it's gonna be a 25-bed, non-mobile, or bedridden patients. The applicant is Rudy Decrimagian, and it's located on Globe Drive, near River Island Golf Course, near Springville. Here is a map depicting the site, east of Porterville and southwest of Springville, along Globe Drive, here. It shows an aerial view of the site. The actual site is the parcel right here, the smaller parcel. The current owner operates a recreation facility that incorporates fishing and RV parking. The applicant will have some definition of what's gonna happen to that after the facility, if this facility is approved. One thing that I need to explain is, what is a congregate living health facility? Now, I know there's a lot of words on there. Essentially, it is a facility that has supportive care, pharmacy, dietary, social recreation for people, disabled persons, severely disabled persons, medically disabled, on a continuous basis. The care is less intensive than that provided for a regular nursing home, however, it is not to the intensity of a hospital itself. Now, one thing about this use permit, the facility will still have to apply for their state license, and apply for all the things that are required by the state itself to operate this type of facility. If this is approved, it does not necessarily mean that the, that the project is approved to the state level. Who is able to be serviced by this facility? The service is for mentally alert, physically disabled individuals. It's for individuals who are terminally ill. It's for individuals who are severely disabled, and, but not limited to speech, physical, occupational therapy. One of the conditions of approval, which I'll explain later, is that this will not become a halfway house for any criminal activity, but only these services will be allowed on the site itself. The bed capacity, there is a senate bill, most congregate care facilities only allow up to 12 beds. However, there is a senate bill which will allow, which specifically names Tulare County, that allows up to 25 beds, and therefore, this use permit will recommend 25 beds. The project is, as I mentioned, is a 25-bed, congregate living health facility for non-mobile or bedridden patients. The existing home covers approximately 12, 2,000 square feet, and they are going to add two additions totaling 4,581 square feet. The operation will operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week, anticipate six employees per shift with three shifts per day, four delivery vehicles per day, and approximately eight visitors per day. Here's a depiction of the site plan itself. North would be to, I left, this way, and the two, this is the existing home in the center. You have one addition to the north, about 2,000 square feet, and then another addition to the south, approximately 1,800 square feet. This is a map depicting the floor plan itself. I know it's hard to see, but you can see all the beds within the facility. There's gonna be a kitchen area, which will be, they'll have to apply for a permit with environmental health prior to building permit occupancy. This is the project site looking north, this will be the smaller addition to the house. You can see the house in the center of the photo there. This is a picture looking south of the project site, which will have the larger portion of the expansion for the facility. General plan consistency for the particular project is within the foothill growth management plan, development corridor, designated foothill mixed-use. As such, hospitals, nursing home facilities are allowed with a use permit, and the project has to comply with all the development standards and policies of the foothill growth management plan, which is in attachment six. The environmental document for the facility, it's determined that it was a categorical exemption, anything under 10,000 square feet. This project is only approximately 4,581-square-foot addition, therefore, it falls under the 10,000 square feet. Received several comments from the facility, which I'll try to address most of these comments. Some of the comments were for the occupants only, for seniors and convalescent only. I have added a condition of approval as the description that I described previously, that it'll only be for those persons convalescent, non-ambulatory, terminal ill, or senior citizens within the facility itself. Some other comments for the traffic, especially delivery vans on the narrow streets and drives. At 60 trips per day, didn't really meet a nexus for a traffic study, however, they will improve the drive itself to county standards. Another comment was the ambulance noise, however, emergency services will be provided to those in need. They wanted fencing that was similar to neighborhood. I added a condition of approval on that, that any fencing around the property itself will be similar to that of the surrounding neighborhood. They also requested the local jobs first, and we did add a condition of approval that employment for these facilities will be hired locally at first, if they are available, which would include nurses, RNs, housekeeping cooks, and maintenance personnel, and they all will also train these personnels to state requirements. The water quality and sustainability, they will have to comply with environmental health, public water system, which basically has annual testing for quality and quantity. It's a pretty rigorous system for water. The expansion of the facilities for additional beds, or if there was another facility to be approved, any expansion of the facility or another facility would have to come back before your commission in the same process as we are here today for a public hearing. Just some notes, there are some ponds next to it. The actual house, there will be no filling of the ponds in any way. Conducted a reconnaissance of the site and confirmed no biological presence on the site, and a designed sewer treatment facility will comply with environmental health conditions. As a recommendation to the planning commission, I would like to add the description of congregate living health facility to the resolution itself, add the three conditions for occupants, fencing, and local employment first, and then recommend approval of the categorical exemption, and the site plan, and the special use permit with the three conditions. With that said, I'd like to call up Mr. Mike Washam. He has a few words to say about the project. Thanks.
Good morning, minimal planning commission. I'm here, Mike Washam, Economic Development Manager for the County of Tulare. Just wanna make a couple comments on this project. The types of services provided by this facility are greatly needed in Tulare County. This is gonna be a high-end, high-quality facility that will greatly improve the services for residents in Springville and Porterville area. The impact of this particular project compared to the 25-lot subdivision that's been approved is significantly less of an impact to the area, the surrounding environment. I know that there was a mention of 60 vehicle trips a day. A 25-lot subdivision would have probably 250 vehicle trips, so it's significantly less than what's already been approved previously by the planning commission. So, this is a better fit for the overall setting and environment of the community. Talking about job creation, obviously, there's an incentive for the job creation for the construction, which is minimal, you know, timeframe, but overall, we're looking at probably approximately 20 full-time employees, which is a significant employer for the area, and looking for local hires, this is great, that Springville can provide, what jobs can be provided to Springville residents, or Porterville would be greatly encouraged. We can work with the local web to coordinate with recruiting, and employment training, and all that, so we'll coordinate with that, and do a recruitment, a local recruitment, maybe a job fair set up for that, so. So, I just wanted to put those little comments out to you before you make your decision. That's all I've got to say. Thanks.
Thank you. That concludes staff presentation. We'll take any questions that you might have.
Commission, have any questions for staff? Seeing none, okay, then I'll open up the public testimony portion. I'd like to start with the applicant or the applicant's agent. Please give your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, my name is Joelle Vargas, and I will be speaking on behalf of the group. My address is 743 East 95th Street in Los Angeles, California.
Mr. Vargas, could you tell us who your group is?
The group is actually gonna be called Sierra Care at the Lake, and that is the entity name that will be on the...
Okay. Proceed.
I just wanna thank you guys, first of all, for taking the time today to listen to us. We're very excited about bringing this project here to this community. It is definitely a project that we feel very strongly would fit very well in your environment, addressing the different questions that have been asked. We definitely want to meet the standards, you know, to definitely fit into what the community is looking for. We are definitely looking to, you know, improve that facility, that lake, that particular environment. We simply want to increase what is currently there by adding an extremely beautiful building that is gonna fit very well into the environment, and bring the healthcare facility to the seniors and to the individuals who greatly need that kind of a facility.
Great.
Are there any questions that you guys would like to ask? I would be more than happy to answer them.
Doesn't look like it. Thank you, Mr. Vargas. I'd like to start with those in favor of the project, so if we have anybody that would like to come up and make testimony, now's the time. Okay, then let's hear testimony that might be opposed to the project.
My name is Walter Jensen. I live at 33234 Globe Drive, which is directly across the street from the proposed project. I really don't have a real objection to the project. I have one question regarding staff's comment about the 12-bed limit going to a 25-bed with a approval of a bill. Does this mean that this project to go to 25 beds is waiting for that approval, or that approval has already been done, and they're gonna be able to do the 25-bed? I just didn't quite understand where that was.
Jo. Actually, that bill, it's California Bill 177. It was introduced on April 13th, 2011. It allows for the, with a special use permit for a facility like this to be built in Monterey, Santa Monica, I'm sorry, Santa Barbara, Solono, Sonoma, and also Tulare County, as the five counties that would allow for up to 25 beds with a special use permit.
So, that bill has been passed?
That bill has been passed, yes.
Thank you.
One question here. Mr. Vargas, I'm just curious as to how come there's just five counties that are allowed to do this? What was the reasoning behind that from the legislature? Do you know?
That particular answer, I do not know.
Okay.
Were the five counties that were named, yeah. So, that's why we have decided that this was a perfect environment for...
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, typically, when you have legislation like that that calls out counties, there's a special need that needs to be met, and the legislature identifies those counties where that need needs to be taken care of.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Okay.
The other comment I have is Globe Drive itself, I read in a statement of fact that Globe Drive is a 40-foot right-of-way road with a 24-foot wide pavement. Unfortunately, the reality is, I went out and actually measured, in front of my house, Globe Drive is 18 feet paved. In front of the property itself, just before the driveway, it's 20 feet from various places from there to where Globe Drive crosses Pleasant Oak. The average is anywhere from 18 to 20 feet. So, is the county or the developer gonna be doing anything to improve Globe Drive to be able to handle the traffic to reach that 24-foot paved that the Globe Drive is supposedly?
Yes. Based on whatever the recommended requirements would be, we would be more than happy to meet those needs, to expand it or to increase whatever the, based on what the county requires.
Will the county be requiring that?
I don't know.
Unfortunately, Craig Anderson isn't here, but I spoke with Craig, and on county roads, even though the pavement width isn't quite the right-of-way width, there was no nexus for this particular project to expand the pavement width at that particular node, on that curb section. So, the engineering did not require any pavement width expansion for that particular area. Now, the applicant will be doing some work on the drive itself at that nexus area. If the commission and applicant is willing to expand that area for a drive, then will the applicant is willing to negotiate that.
Based on any requirements that the county is requiring for us to do, we are more than happy to accommodate those needs.
So, okay, I guess I'm not familiar with the exact, we don't have a, do we have a photo of the site?
I do have the area photo. The drive facility is actually off this map, and we cannot see it, but it's just to the right along this area, and at this corner, right here, is a narrow corner with the 18-foot. Is that correct?
No. If you bring your cursor up to where the driveway of the property reaches Globe Drive...
Oh, it's right here.
Right there.
There it is.
Right there. From that point there, if you go north in your pic...
Sorry. Whoops. Sorry about that.
There we go. From that point, if you go north in your picture to where, basically, which is beyond your aerial photograph there, is where Pleasant Oak Drive crosses Globe Drive, that whole area there is the area where Globe Drive is approximately 18 feet wide, and the sides, we do have a photograph, unfortunately, it's not a...
There is an intersection approximately quarter-mile, half-mile...
About a half-mile.
...of this particular, the site itself, that is a little bit narrow. However, it is a half-mile away from the project site.
Can you show me where the applicant is gonna have to do some work?
It would be right here, along the driveway itself. Is the, are the deliveries gonna be coming up from Pleasant Oak Drive down, or, I mean... The deliveries will basically come from SR 190, and then on to Globe Drive itself, most likely. They wouldn't be coming from the north? Yes, they would. They would be coming down, I know this is hard to see on this map, but Globe Drive essentially intersects State Route 190 right where the arrow is, and directly south, approximately a mile, is the project site. They'd be coming through that intersection that you're talking about, Walter? That's correct.
Yes, sir. They'd be going that approximately half-mile stretch that's only about 18 feet wide.
Anything else, Mr. Jensen?
No, my concern is that becomes a safety issue for emergency vehicles, larger vehicles, and cross-traffic, that the road is just not set to handle that at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to provide testimony here?
Good morning, my name is Dustin Henshaw. I reside at 33246 Globe Drive, which would be lot number nine on the, on the map that went out to all the residents. I'm also directly across the street from the entrance of the projected site. Also, my concern, as well as my neighbors', was the condition of the roads. I have some photos right here of the road directly in front of the property that show it's in quite disrepair, and handling any more commercial traffic will definitely need, will cause the road to, you know, deteriorate more, it will need to be improved. Is there any wagons passes around for viewing?
Yeah, once we get them, there are, though, right?
Like I said, that is directly in front of the property, which is directly in front of my house, and as we all know, Tulare County, our backcountry roads are kind of forgotten about, and it is currently, you know, we have a lot of traffic, sightseers come up on the weekends, campers. It already handles a lot of traffic, as you can tell, with this project. I think it's a great, I'm not totally, I'm not opposed to this, I just think some things need to be fixed prior to it happening. I think it's a great idea. Some of the other concerns that Chuck over here brought up already was the institutional-type fencing, which he's already addressed, and the senior or convalescent living only, hoping that it won't eventually turn into a halfway house, or a drug rehab facility, or Section 8 housing, or a mobile home park in the future. There's a Sequoia Dawn in Springville, which used to be a retirement facility for seniors, has turned into Section 8 housing and has gone quite downhill. I work for an ambulance company here in Tulare County, we run a lot of drug overdose calls there, and just as being a resident, you hope that something like this won't turn into that. So, hopefully, it stays senior, convalescent living.
Yeah, that is one of the conditions of approval.
Perfect. Okay, those are all my concerns right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to make some comments? Okay, Mr. Vargas, would you like any rebuttal time?
Yeah, I just wanna touch base on the, you know, in regards to the fencing, that was, obviously, that's been brought up a couple of times. We don't plan to put any kind of, you know, what doesn't fit into the environment. We want it to fit in perfectly with what is currently there. The idea, as far as the type of facility, you know, we definitely agree that we do not want it to be a halfway home, or, you know, any kind of facility that is going to later on down the line, you know, bring in crime to the area, because that is not our goal. Our goal is to give the residents of the facility a friendly, healthy environment for them to live out their lives. The idea is to bring, you know, some peace and quiet to them without bringing any extra, you know, activity to the neighbors around in the area. So, we definitely wanna make sure that people understand that, you know, we understand what you're asking for, and we're willing to, and we're wanting to, give you that, what you're asking for.
Okay. Okay, well, if there's no other testimony, I'll close the public testimony portion of this hearing, and move it back to the commission for comments.
I have a quick question for Mr. Vargas.
Mr. Vargas, we have a question for you. Could you come to the microphone again?
Mr. Vargas, you're from Los Angeles area?
Yes.
How many of these projects have you done previous to this? You're a project manager, correct?
This particular project?
No. Your title, you're a project manager, correct?
I'm managing, I'm supervising this project, yes.
Okay. How many of these have you done?
Of this particular type of project, none. This will be the first, but we have definitely been doing a lot of construction in the Los Angeles area.
Anything outside of Los Angeles?
No.
And what type of construction?
Mostly homes.
Single-family residential?
Yeah, single-family residencies.
Have we adequately addressed the road condition? Or can we add that as a condition?
Well, based upon the information that's in the record and the testimony that you've heard today, there is no nexus, so it would have to be a voluntary measure by the applicant and it's not clear where we're headed with regard to that one. But in terms of the evidence, engineering has looked at this and there's no nexus because our general plan says a hundred trips, you know, traffic study and so forth. It's sixty, it's well below that. Typically, the improvements that need to be made are associated directly in front of the subdivision. Beyond it, it's, it's, it's a gray area. At, at best, it's a gray area. So not clear as to what the applicant wants to do, but the evidence seems to indicate that it's not warranted.
Right.
Yeah, that and you may also want to understand that when we talk about sixty, we're talking round trips, thirty in, thirty out. So, and, and the fire department, we do have a condition of approval that says provide all-weather access road to the building or buildings affected by the use permit. So their concerns have been addressed as condition of approval number seventeen. So we, we're comfortable with that environmentally.
Okay. So I guess the testimony that I heard from Mr. Vargas that they would repair anything that were required of them, looks like there's not a nexus here to make any significant requirements other than what they've agreed to do right at the entrance. Is that, do I, do I understand that correctly?
Yes.
Just, just as a question, Mr. Vargas, could you come forward here? We were shown several, I don't know if you've seen these, could you pass that on to Chuck and see? There seems to be some evidence of minor repairs that need to be done, short of replacing or repairing the whole half-mile road, which is not what we're going to probably ask you to do. As, as, in an effort to be a good neighbor, is there some effort beyond just the entrance that you could do to, to help the neighborhood out?
I'm sorry, what did the speaker say?
Oh, I'm sorry. We have no problem fixing issues like these small items like this. That's not a problem for us, we'll fix it.
Thank you. What I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, we could easily add some language to the conditions of approval, which say something like this, that the applicant shall meet and confer with RMA staff to address minor road repairs.
Okay. Is that okay, sound okay with you?
Probably just directly in front of the facility, right? I, I mean, to go half a mile, yeah, that's...
Yeah, we're, we're not talking...
All right, then we'll say reasonable, to address reasonable minor road repairs.
Yes.
And that would catch it.
I think so. I think so.
Mr. Chair, the only thing I'm hearing on concerns, unless I'm off-base, is road width, emergency vehicle access and potential change of occupancy in the future with this because based on the past experience they've had up there, so...
Thank you, Mr. Vargas. Chuck, you want to go over the recommendations for us again?
Yes, the recommendations to the planning commission would be to add the description of the congregate living health facility description to the resolution itself. There would be four conditions now. One would be limiting the occupants to senior or medically convalescent persons, the fencing similar to the surrounding area, local employment first, and another condition, minor road repairs within a reasonable distance of the project itself. And as such, staff would recommend approval of the exemption and of the use permit thirteen thirty-seven and site plan thirteen oh seven as a congregate care living facility. Thank you.
Comments or a motion?
I would move for approval of that with the listed three conditions, as well as the applicant shall meet and confer. That's what I was adding this other one, sorry. Thank you, Commissioner Gong. With that, I would make that motion.
You have a motion to...
I'll second it.
Call, please.
Gong?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes. I'll just add that I, the residents do have the ability to put in complaints if they see delivery vehicles, et cetera, driving excessive speeds. So that's probably something that the applicant will have to contend with at some point in those narrow roads.
Right, the motion is passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, let's get, get the gentleman back.
Don't get it, don't work it out. Just trying to be a good neighbor out there.
Okay, Mr. Chair, we're, we finished.
So I don't need to re-adjourn, we'll just move on to item four B, special use permit, PSP one-three-dash-zero-four-five, Diana Robles, categorically exemption and special use permit to allow contractor's storage yard on a forty-eight-hundred-square-foot portion of approximately one-point-nine-nine acres. This is located about seven-hundred feet north of Avenue two-fifty-six and Palm Avenue, east of Road two-oh-four, approximately two miles south of Exeter and April Hill is our staff. Good morning, April.
Good morning, Chairman Whitlatch and Commissioners. I'm April Hill, Planner Two in County's Project Review Division. Diana Robles has applied for the special use permit to allow the contractor's storage yard, trucking business and labor contracting, which is operated by her brother, Albert Robles. The application is in response to a code violation. Project was determined to be categorically exempt from CEQA regarding the operation of existing facilities, no expansion beyond that existing at the time of our determination. Subject site is, is located on a forty-eight-hundred-square-foot portion of a one-point-nine-nine-acre parcel in the AE twenty zone, exclusive agriculture, twenty-acre minimum. It's outside any urban development boundary or urban area boundary governed by the Rural Valley Lands Plan, which allows contractor's storage yards with approved use permits. Land use element designates the site for valley agriculture and this project does comply with relevant policies of the general plan. Surrounding properties are also zoned AE twenty and contain rural residences and vacant agricultural land with orchards further north and west. Within a quarter of a mile to the south are Waterman Industries and Amerio Gear Company on Avenue two-fifty-six and the railroad, Tulare, San Joaquin Valley and Tulare Valley Railroad. With conditions of approval insured, included to ensure compliance, the project complies with the zoning ordinance. AE twenty zoning was applied to the site as part of the Rural Valley Lands Plan in nineteen seventy-eight. Because the one-point-nine-nine-acre parcel was created by grant deed after the AE zoning was applied and the parcel is smaller than required in AE twenty, the division was considered illegal and requires a certificate of compliance. The applicant did acquire the property after the grant, after the parcel was created and by grant deed. The parcel itself is one of our nineteen oh eight subdivisions, so there are like twenty-five-acre, twenty-one lots that are twenty-five acre, twenty-five feet wide. So a condition of approval is included for the applicant to apply for the voluntary merger of those lots before a building permit can be issued. So they need a certificate of compliance and for the legality of the creation of the parcel and a voluntary merger. There's a, the violation included a, building a pole barn that was thirty-foot wide and therefore, and that was built without a building permit. Here's an aerial of the site taken in about two thousand and seven. You can notice that there are many small lots around that, many smaller lots around the, in this, as a cluster. The site contains a, a mobile home occupied by Mr. Robles, forty-eight-hundred-square-foot pole barn, and there's fencing. Domestic well is located on another property that is owned by family. Site has indirect access from county-maintained Avenue two-fifty-six on the south along a seven-hundred-and-thirty-foot-long private road maintained by the family. No conditions of approval were recommended by County Public Works. Site plan shows the mobile home and the pole barn, storage area, landscaping, septic system and the domestic well on the adjacent lot. There are also some vacant building pads on the, on the site. As I said before, no expansion or additional structures are anticipated. Business itself operates year-round, Monday through Friday, eight to five P.M. operating hours. Slow season during the summer with only two to three trucks operating. Between three and five employees work from the site and equipment includes three to five semi-trucks, some forklifts, trailers, ladders and portable toilets, which are parked under the pole barn. Trucks make a single haul every day, going out to the fields, coming back. Portable toilets are cleaned and maintained off the site by a licensed business. No vehicle maintenance or truck washing on-site. Environmental health had conditions. If there were any large fuel tanks or any hazardous materials, none are used now or California fish and wildlife shows no sightings of any endangered species. There are no wetlands or waterby, waterways nearby, no likely cultural resources since it's on the valley floor, not on a bluff or a hillside or near a, near a waterway. Public notice for the project was mailed to surrounding property owners and published in the Times Delta with a ten-day public comment period. No comments were received before the hearing. The applicant, Diana Robles, and her brother Albert Robles are here in the audience if your commission would care to hear from them. This ends staff's report. Thank you very much, Chairman Whitlatch and Commissioners.
Thank you very much, April. At this time, we'll open the public testimony and it's customary, we have the people who are for it or the applicant, if you'd like to come forward and tell us something about the project that April hasn't already told us. You're invited to come up, don't be nervous, we don't bite, so if there's something you want to tell us, we invite you up.
My name's Diana Robles and she pretty much covered everything.
We just need your address because we're recording what you say, please.
Oh. The address, two-oh-four-five-six...
No, your address.
Oh, my address. Twenty-eight-two-zero-zero, Road two-ten in Exeter, California.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Continue.
Anyway, she pretty much covered everything. It's pretty much simple and basic. We want to do a storage yard and she addressed all the issues about it, so if you have any questions for me?
Before you go, any of my fellow Commissioners have questions?
I just have one question. Mrs. Robles, what, what type of a road, access road do you have to the yard there? Is that...
It's got DG.
DG?
Yes.
Okay, so it's an all-weather road then?
Yes.
Pretty much? Okay.
And it's been traveled quite a bit, so it's pretty solid and...
Okay.
She mentioned the hours of operation is Monday through Friday, eight to five. Does that sound right to you?
Well, that would probably be a question for my brother, but they, they leave the, the place at, come here, come here, Albert, because he's the one that runs the business, I, I really don't know. Huh?
We'll try not to.
I don't bite, but Gil does.
My name is Albert Robles. I live on the property and the address is at two-oh-four-five-six, Avenue two-fifty-six in Exeter. Usually, usually the trucks take off around seven and five, six, seven o'clock, usually no more than eight o'clock, they're, they're, they're parked.
Saturdays also, right?
Oh, yes, yes. Well, sometimes, you know, I mean, it just depends. Sometimes during the week, they, they don't move.
I understand. It's just, I think we said Monday through Friday, eight to five, and I'm pretty sure you work on Saturdays during the season.
Yes. Not, not all the time, but, but, and basically it's, basically it's just citrus harvesting, you know, around the Porterville, Lindsay, Exeter, Wood Lake, some Dinuba, and then in the summertime, we haul tree fruit from Cutler, Rossi, Dinuba. So they move probably same fashion, seven, eight o'clock in the morning.
We probably need to start at six and end at seven in the evening. That'd be careful, just so one of your neighbors gets...
Yes, to be safe, yes.
Yeah, Monday through Saturday.
Yes.
Wait, is that okay, Gil? Okay.
Do you think six is kind of, I know it's a farm thing, but sixes might be a little early.
Well, if they start coming to work, you know, and hanging out, then the neighbors might say, "Well, you said you're starting at seven and it sounds like they're departing at seven," so... What's the most people you ever have on-site?
On-site?
Yeah.
In the morning?
In the morning, yeah.
Probably two or three.
Okay, we just want to make sure when your neighbor doesn't complain in the letter of laws that, "Oh, they were there at six" and the next thing you got, you have to come back here, so. Six to seven in the evening will cover it all?
Yes, yes.
That's, we don't have a lot of, a lot of traffic there, doesn't sound like, so we're probably okay with that?
Okay.
Yeah, we try, we try to be friendly to the, to the neighbors, so we, you know, the trucks go slow, they don't make a lot of dust and all of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone else like to come forward and testify in favor of this project? If not, is there anyone who is opposed who would like to come forward and give testimony at this time? Not seeing any, we'll close the public testimony and then we'll go to the staff for recommendation. And I think we'd like to extend the hours and the days of the week, so...
Thank you for the reality check, Commissioner Aguilar. From the paper of the, from the application paper, eight to five, to real world, we'll revise the condition regarding operating hours to six A.M. to eight P.M. and recommend approval of the categorical exemption and approval and the special use permit.
And, and Monday through Saturday.
Monday through Saturday, thank you, sir.
Did you say eight P.M. or...
Well, he said they sometimes get in as late as eight, so...
I imagine in the summertime with the, the stone fruit, they're probably coming in pretty late.
If you prefer, sometimes we have said dawn to dusk.
No.
Okay. Fine. Thank you.
So having heard that, is I, do I have a motion for one of my, or any more discussion or do we have a motion to approve it?
Make that motion.
Have a second, please? I'll second the motion.
Gong?
Yes.
Milice?
Yes.
Yes?
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, pass the gavel down to Ed once again. Okay, pass the gavel down to Ed once again.
All right. Are you leaving?
Huh? I was. Okay. Moving on then to, uh, item five, uh, A, continued public hearings. Five A is a special use permit, thirteen dash zero one nine, the great guys and Matthew Graham. Uh, once again, we're here to look at a categorical exemption and special use to allow a agricultural sales, uh, service, which is sales and marketing fresh fruit on a one-acre parcel in an AE twenty zone. The site is located on the west side of Shirk Road approximately eighteen hundred eighty-three feet north of SR, uh, which would be Highway one ninety-eight west of Visalia. This was continued from July twenty-fourth, August twenty-eighth, October ninth, and, uh, we're here again today.
So, Charlotte, uh, oh, just as, uh, full disclosure, it's not going to make a difference, but I live on Shirk Road about a quarter mile north of this thing, so I'm very familiar with the location and the site and the condition around it.
Okay.
Okay, Charlotte, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Charlotte Ruesuelas, RMA Planning Branch. Uh, this item, as Commissioner Diaz just, uh, uh, said, was brought to you beginning on July twenty-fourth, August twenty-eighth, August ninth, and now today's date. Uh, throughout that process, there were two issues that were of concern to the applicant as well as the city of Visalia because it's within the, the urban development boundary of the city of Visalia. Those two issues had to do with the construction improvement, uh, development improvements for the driveway and parking area as well as, um, annexation of the property. Several meetings have taken place between the city staff, county staff, the property owners, applicants, um, in regards to those two issues. And, um, pursuant to the above, uh, the referenced meeting dates and the meetings that have taken place, uh, outside the public hearing forum, uh, staff feels that those issues have been resolved to the satisfaction of all parties. In regards to condition seventeen requiring paving and parking and driveway areas, uh, that shall be revised to state that within ninety days of formal annexation, the property, property's drive approach and parking lot will be improved in a manner that meets the city of Visalia standards. Um, and condition nineteen pertaining to the annexation to the city, that condition will read, uh, the property owner shall sign an agreement with the city of Visalia to annex the subject site into the city. Said agreement shall be signed by the property owner prior to recordation of this resolution. Um, that agreement has been signed, uh, we have a copy of it on file, and it will become an exhibit to this resolution if this, if this project is approved. Uh, based on that information, um, and based on the discussion, the findings, revised conditions of approval, and the fact that the issues and/or concerns have been resolved to the satisfaction of the applicant, the county staff, and the city of Visalia staff, and that the proposal is in compliance with the county general plan and development standards, staff recommends that your commission, uh, adopt the categorical exemption and approve special use permit number PSP thirteen zero zero one.
Thank you, Charlotte. Any questions for Charlotte? Uh, this is a public hearing and I'll open up the public testimony portion. Great guys here today? Property owners here? Yes? Uh, you have any, please come forward, I, I just have a question for you. You know, give us your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, planning commissioners, Mr. Chairman. Uh, my name is Kent Kolfus and I reside at three two two six five, Road two forty-four out in sunny Lemon Cove, California.
Mr. Kolfus, you've heard, uh, Charlotte's, uh, conditions and amended conditions. Are you, uh, uh, okay with, uh, with that?
Yes, I'm in full agreement with it.
Okay, all right. That, that's the only question I had.
And I thank you gentlemen for the excess time that's spent, I've spent on this project.
Well, it takes time, but we, we try to get it right. Okay, any, uh, any other testimony, uh, for or against on this project? Seeing none, then I will close the public testimony portion, turn it back to commission for comments or anything? Okay, uh, we have the recommendations, um...
I would make the motion to move for approval, um, approve special use permit PSP thirteen dash zero three four.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Gong?
Yes.
Nellis?
Yes.
Yes.
Whitlatch? Oh, he said, oh.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, it was one three zero one nine. Dreadfully sorry I missed that, but I know you've heard that. Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Did you forget me?
Sorry. Yes?
Yes. We're going to need all of them. Okay, the motion has passed.
Very good. Mr. Chairman, if I may just make a brief comment, I know this process was somewhat lengthy, but in keeping with the presentation that I gave, uh, last commission meeting about the MOU and the special obligations, this is an example where it worked, where we have unanimity with the applicant, the staff, as well as, um, the city of Visalia without objections or appeal and so forth. So it did take some time, but it's an example of how the process did work.
And you're right, and it did take some time. I'm glad that we had that opportunity to talk with the city a little bit to, uh, get a little flexibility from them on this situation. Uh, I was, was concerned that, uh, they were coming down a little heavy, heavy-handed on a, uh, on, on somebody that was just trying to make a living out here and provide some jobs and they weren't going to annex it, but they wanted to have their thumbprint on it. And I'm glad they were able to, uh, flex a little bit with us.
And it probably saved a lot of time, too. Doing, this took longer at this level, but it would have taken a lot longer the other way.
Will I take care of you, Kent?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Have a great day. Okay, moving right along. I can't go any faster, you're so fast, Ed, I, we can do a great job next year, so...
We should have been done two weeks ago, but that's all right.
I can't comment on that. Five B, special use permit PSP one three dash zero three four, Verizon Wireless, Rebecca Anderson for SAC Wireless, the categorical exemption, this has been before us before for a cell tower, um, and so Ann is our staff person, Ann Chapman.
Uh, good morning, Commissioners. I'm Ann Chapman, a planner with the RMA Planning Branch, and this is a continued public hearing. We continued this from October ninth, and the key issue has been the location of a proposed Verizon cell tower. So the first part of my talk will be reviewing the preferred location that Verizon presented last time, and then we have some new data we can present that Verizon has provided on an alternative location. Okay. Yep, the applicant is Verizon Wireless. This is a proposal for a new hundred-foot monopole cell tower in Orocy off Road one fourteen. This shows the vicinity of Roxy and Dinuba. An aerial view of the site shows that it's largely agricultural area with scattered residences. This is zoned AE twenty. The Verizon site evaluation for, that chose this original site, uh, checked on criteria for need for the site, visual impact, and then they did consider alternatives at the time, and we have more information today. The coverage area in the Orocy area, uh, this shows a, a big area that's currently not covered, and with the proposed cell tower, we would now have this coverage in the Orocy area. Some visual impacts to the neighborhood were considered with the original site, which is set back approximately seven hundred feet from Road one fourteen, and as I mentioned, it's a monopole design rather than a conventional tower. The original location does have some neighbors nearby. This shows, uh, the closest neighbors, house number one, and this is about eight hundred nineteen feet from the proposed cell tower. House number two is six hundred sixty-three feet. There's a third house that is twelve hundred feet. The neighbors at the October ninth public hearing requested that your commission consider an alternative site, and you directed Verizon to consider a site that is closer to the southern end of Mr. Carlson's property. So this, some, some features of this, it's five hundred eighty-seven feet to the south of the current site, it's still on Mr. Carlson's property, he actually owns both of these parcels. There is an existing access road here, but unlike the original site, uh, which has power, this alternative site would have no existing power. Verizon has provided us with information that, uh, compares proximity to neighbors and calculates the costs that would be required if they moved to the alternative site. This, just, this shows the numbers, I will summarize these on this table. House number one, if it moves to the alternative site, well, the, the tower would be four hundred thirty-two feet further away. House number two would be, the tower would be one hundred fifty-four feet further away. House number three, however, would be four hundred forty-one feet closer, and there's also an existing cluster of homes southwest of the site that would be closer to the alternative location. Verizon analyzed costs of this move, it would be approximately seventy-eight thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars, and this doesn't include, uh, loss of revenue due to a sixty-day estimated delay or staff time, uh, required to turn in additional reports. A little over half of the cost would be having to add power and fiber to the site. Our recommendation is that the planning commission accept the project, the original site, uh, accept the SEQA categorical exemption, and approve the special use permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. This is a continued public hearing. At this time, if the applicant would like to come forward, if they're here to give any new testimony, we would invite you to come forward. Good morning.
Morning. Rebecca Anderson, representing Verizon Wireless.
Your address?
Address, P.O. Box two zero eight eight, West Sacramento, California.
Small place you live, with a P.O. box? Oh, don't forget it, that's okay.
It's my business address, I hope that's okay. Uh, we are just here respectfully requesting your approval of our application. Verizon Wireless is proposing this site as a service to the community. Um, these days, many people rely on, um, not only cell phones, um, but these are tablets, other internet services for business, day-to-day communication, um, a huge part of our daily lives. And it is Verizon's desire to provide this service to this community, and we try to do so in the best way possible, um, both visually and, um, uh, set, setting back from the, the roadways, and also not, um, needing to create new roadways, et cetera, minimizing the amount of trees removed. And also, obviously Verizon does consider the costs when putting in these sites, and so that they can continue to grow their network to serve other communities as well. And as you saw, um, I, I did create that map analysis regarding the distances of homes. The alternate location, if the alternate location, or if there were alternate locations that were a clear, um, huge, huge difference of, um, you know, where this site was being located as far as impact-wise, then, um, w- we feel that it may be something that could be offset, um, but considering that the cost is, uh, at least eighty thousand more considering some of the other, um, costs that we couldn't calculate, we feel that we have chosen a very great location for this site, and we do, um, request your approval, and please let me know if you have any questions.
Have any questions for my fellow commissioners?
Yes, one question, uh, without getting real exact or specific, but this eighty thousand dollar additional cost, what, what percentage is that as of overall construction and installation of this project?
As a very rough number, not having calculated it, I would expect this site could probably cost between four and five hundred thousand.
Any other questions?
On, on that alternative site, uh, that house number three that is closer, is that the owner's house?
Mm-mm, no, it is not. There is no, um, residence on the properties that are owned by this particular property.
The owner of the property does not have a house in that area?
Not, yeah, not on the property. There's no residential on this property.
And was it the west, uh, the, because that's west, right? What were the neighbors trying to protect, the west view or the east view?
Uh, tower would be here, so the tower is east of Mr. Vay's house, which is house number one, and west of Mr. Rollins' house.
I think it was the west view that they were trying to protect, right? That they were complaining about? Well, we'll hear from him in a bit, that's fine. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a public, uh, hearing, uh, if anyone else would like to testify for or against this project, you're invited to come forward at this time. Uh, we heard you last time, so anything new, but, uh, don't let that hold, don't hold, let that hold you back, okay?
Cliff Rolland, four two one nine nine, Road one twenty, Rosa. I don't understand...
Your name, sir? Your name, for the record.
Cliff Rolland.
Thank you.
I don't understand what's being proposed here.
I'll let Ann tell you.
It's the original recommendation, the original location.
Is that what it is?
In other words, based on this analysis, the staff is not recommending a change or moving of the location.
All right, then I, in my understanding, the last meeting, it was, uh, it lacked because of a, uh, a motion, a second of the motion. And then you suggested we continue this on?
Which we've done. And so the, based upon the new information that was presented, the, um, the commission will consider that today and a new motion could be made.
Where's the end of this thing? I mean, I'm, I'm critical of, you know, we've had our day, so to speak, and it, it, the motion died because of lack of second, and then you suggested to let them have another crack at the scene?
Well, because there was an issue with regard to the economic feasibility of moving the location, we have that data now, so that's new information that can be presented to the commission, and they could take action or not.
Thank you. I'm gonna let my neighbor do the principal talk.
Sure, and this isn't the end of the rainbow, so to speak. Our decision isn't, it's final as far as here, but you can't appeal it to the board of supervisors, okay?
Yes, sir. The, uh, the, the, I'm gonna let my neighbor...
Okay.
...more articulate than I am to express our opinions, but the cost factor, you know, really, that's not a, that's a non-issue with me. I wish I could go into business, I'm, I'm a farmer. I wish I could go into business knowing if I could spend either four hundred thousand or added eighty thousand, that I'd get a return on that. I understand that these towers charge a fee for their usage. They perhaps reason space in these towers to be run, it's a business. They know what their costs are going in. I think some of us here are agriculturists, we know, don't we wish we could know what we're going to get when we put in our pre-harvest costs, whether to a cow or a vine or a tree or whatever? So to me, that's not an argument. The argument, I, I stay with the arguments that we've had, we've expressed before as far as the visual, the noise, and the inconvenience.
Thank you. You're invited, sir, come on up and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Uh, my name's Randy Vay, live at four two two seven four, Road one fourteen, just on the north side, house number one.
Yeah.
And I won't go through all we talked about before, just, uh, maybe several different things. One, this is the first time that I've seen the information that was brought forth, so haven't had a chance to... haven't had a chance to review any of it before now, so I'm not sure, you know, I see the costing, but the, the distances between the different houses, I'll just re, you know, I'll restate, I still think it's the right thing to do, to go as equidistant as possible between the three homes. Didn't have a chance to look at this at all, so I don't know how they made their calculations or what they did, but I still think a, a fair compromise for all parties is to, to make it as equidistant as possible. And then, the other thing that Mr. Rolland was talking about, I, I don't think that the onus should be on us. Because of the $80,000 that Verizon is claiming that they have to spend extra, they could have just as easily come to us initially and nailed down a, a location without the added cost. So I, I think that's just a part of, their part of doing business and is a decision they made in, in their business process. So, again, that's my thoughts on that.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, may I just ask a question for the record? Is the applicant saying that he would request a continuance because he has not had sufficient time to review the information? Or, or is, or is the information, Mr. V?
Please come back to the microphone-
My comment is whether you are asking for a continuance because you didn't have sufficient time to consider this new information, or are you satisfied that at least a decision can be made today?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm asking for an alternative site, so not the present site.
So you're not asking for a continuance, though? You, you want a decision today, one way or the other?
I would prefer a decision today, yes.
Okay, thank you.
We always give the applicant an opportunity to come up and say something that they would like, if they want to add anything, they can. If not, we'll take it to the planning commission consideration and the staff. Staff recommendation is, Ann?
You approve special use permit PSP 13034 as originally proposed, subject to findings and conditions, and accept the CQA categorical exemption.
Since there is some discussion amongst the planning commission, we will go to the planning commission if there's any discussion. Does anyone like to talk about the staff's recommendation?
I did the original distances and the new distances and the average out improvement is 48 feet between the original and the, and the new. In other words, all the new distances improves everybody at an aggregate by 48 feet better, further away, whichever way you want to put that. So that's about $1,600 if Verizon spends 80, is it $80,000? It's about $1,666 a foot to make everybody better, FYI.
Anybody else like to comment on this? If not, I'll go to my head.
No, I, there's nothing to comment.
Someone like to make a motion for, to adopt this resolution as prevented by staff, presented by staff? Lot of tight lips here. Well, after 14 years, I've never had this happen, so.
May I make another motion?
Sure, go ahead, make any motion.
I move that we direct this site to be placed at the alternate location.
I have a second on that.
I'd second that.
Okay, roll call?
Gong?
Uh, yes.
Elise?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
No.
Norman?
Yes.
Egular?
Can you do this?
Yes, there's evidence in the record that would allow you to make that motion.
I'd say yes.
Okay, motion carried, so thank you very much. The motion was to go to the second site, this not, this farthest away from your house, and so the motion was carried. So it's not gonna go at the original site, it will go at the alternate site. Thank you. Okay, well, here's the big news. Last meeting, we talked about who's gonna be the chair and vice chair for the planning commission 2014, so we're gonna have an election.
We did that already, didn't we?
This is to formalize the vote. That was-
Formalize the vote.
-informal discussion.
That was just for practice. I want to recommend, since Nancy's not here, that we make her the chair, so.
Well, let's see. Oh, there's still enough. Even if I abstain, there's still enough.
Okay, someone to make a motion that we nominate Ed Diaz in the vice chair, it would be Mel Gong, right? I think that was correct. Someone like to make that motion for the planning commission 2014?
I'll make the motion that we confirm Mr. Diaz and Mr. Gong as chair and vice chair for 2014.
And I'll second that. Roll call?
Gong?
Yes.
Elise?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Egular?
Yes.
Motion carried, congratulations, gentlemen, you're it, so. Okay, we'll go to item 6B. We're having this substandard building abatement update by Dennis Lehman, our chief building inspector.
Good morning, planning commissioners. I'm Dennis Lehman. I'm the building and housing manager for the county of Tulare.
We have a new old color one.
We've presented this to the board of supervisors a couple of months back and was asked to go ahead and bring it forward and present it to you as well. And what I'd like to do is do a, just a brief overview of the substandard abatement over, uh, project process here. And I'm going to go over the code enforcement framework, how our department is organized, the abatement activity and funding, abatement activity for 1213, abatement activity for 1314, future abatement activity, and photographs of some abatement activity and some next steps. Currently, the code enforcement division is kind of made up of building and zoning enforcement, employee housing. Currently in, uh, building and zoning enforcement, we have about 350 open code enforcement cases we have hearings almost weekly. Employee housing, we have 180 camps that we inspect annually. It is a program that people get into.
Dennis, let me just stop you for a minute. You had 300 and what, cases open?
About 300, about 350. It depends if we count the medical marijuana.
How old are they?
Excuse me?
How old are the cases?
How old?
Right.
Uh, we probably have cases two years old, at the most, that were currently still working, working towards abatement.
Okay, thank you.
And Dennis, last meeting, Mr. Spata addressed and said 40 minutes and an hour and 45 minutes later, we're still going, so just keep that in mind.
I will make this brief. I see I've already cleared the house, so. Abandoned vehicle enforcement we also do, and we do between 400 and 600 cars a year. We made a goal of 500 and sometimes that's hard to reach, sometimes not, they all just aren't cars you go out and tow. Sometimes it takes search warrants and what have you to get there. But I'm really gonna focus on substandard abatement. These are for residences primarily. We've had in the budget for the last couple of years, that is a line item of $50,000, excuse me, of $50,000 there. And this year, we've requested an additional $20,000 for a special project I'm gonna show you at the end, which we just completed. Some typical abatement costs are our title search, about $500. We send it to Chicago Title or some of the other title companies, get a title search, notify all interested parties or all parties with claims of property. Administrative fees, these range from anywhere from obtaining warrants with county council to just the time it takes us to walk up to the door and nail the signs on and what have you. So it, it can be anywhere from $5,000 to three hours of time, depending on what we have to go through. And then the demolition costs to, uh, from the contractor as well. With the $50,000, in the year 1213, physical year 1213, we removed six homes. I, I want to say homes, substandard buildings is what they really are. Physical year 1314, we did six as well. They average about $6,000, $7,000 a piece to be torn down. And you have those both in attachments there where we have torn them down. Currently, we have 56 substandard buildings. And it doesn't mean all of these are going to be tore down, some may be, uh, some may be rehabbed. We can have all kinds of things. It looks like 8.5 years of, of future tear downs out there. Not quite, I would say they're about 50/50. 50% of them will be tore down and about 50% of them will be rehabbed. And you have that as attachment B. Next item on your, is a map. We're kind of equal opportunity with our substandard buildings out there, they're located throughout the county. You've got the black, are the ones we have, that we have demoed, the gray, light dark gray are in progress, and then we have the pending, the 50 units pending. I'd like to show you a couple of before and afters. We're really kind of chasing some low-hanging fruit. This was a house that was moved into Seville. The owner moved it, he was a general, he was a general contractor, he got it on-site, got it put down on the foundation. He passed away and the house burned. Sat there for a couple of years, we put it out to bid, we had a bid contractor, we had a contractor we awarded the contract to. Well, lo and behold, we got out there and the water pipes underneath the house had leaked and we couldn't get any equipment on-site for about a month until the water had dried up because the site had become so saturated. So those are just part and parcel of all of the things that we have to go through. We think we're ready to tear it down and now we're fixing water pipes, the main. That, that now looks like that. And that was right across the street from the Seville Elementary School. Next item we did here, this was one in east-
How long was it?
I've been with the county two and a half years and it was there the whole time we tore it down last year, so I would say it was probably there. Joey Lane was the contractor on it, was killed about four years ago in an automobile accident, so I would say sometime shortly thereafter.
Burn condition?
Excuse me?
After it burned, how long?
After it burned, it sat there, I'm gonna say a minimum of two years that I'm aware of. The one in Alta Vista here is in east Porterville, and again, it was a burned structure and it had sat there for longer than I can remember. But remember, my memory with the county is only about two and a half years, so I haven't been out there, but it was there. We call it low-hanging fruit, got a lot of it, okay? And we're, we're taking them off. This is what this site currently looks like, and I'm gonna say, this picture's about three months old, there's already a new home being built there. So it does make an opportunity. People need to realize that these old houses have value. The water fees have been paid, the sewer fees have been paid, there's utilities on the site. There's a lot of assets to these places. There's some bad things, too. There's a, there's a house that needs tearing down, but there are other assets there that oftentimes people don't realize, these people took advantage of it. Our total cost on this was $5,699 to demo this. I talked to you about a special project, I put this picture in specifically for Charlie. The, this is a special project in east Porterville. It was about a one-acre site and the gentleman was quite creative, he's passed away as well at the age of 53. He decided he was going to turn his property into a landfill and he started charging people $5 a pickup load to come in and dump their garbage. That's how he sustained himself. He had some very expensive habits also. And this site had caught on fire, not, this is the first fire, caught on fire twice. Both times it caught other properties on fire. So we were scrambling, we had flying brands in the air, the fire department did a great job. Fortunately, they were only down the road about a third of a mile, half a mile. This is what the site looked like in the back, there were actually people living in these trailers and what have you, they were junk, they all went to the landfill. But that's what the site looked like, it was piled up about eight, nine feet with garbage. This is one of the encampments in the back, the dartboard in the corner is, is hiding the shower that went to a hole in the ground. And this was one of the encampments, there's a little dog in there that was announcing our presence to the owner. It has been, we, we have had a special project and we've moved forward with this, we have bid this project out. This is what it looked like from the front. And basically, I'm here for some feedback from the board of supervisors, yourself as well, and just to continue this general program that we're on, about six a year that we're going for, and then to receive some direction concerning that. Before we go there, though, I'd like you to look at the very back page of your packet, we just got this site cleaned up. This is what the garbage dump now looks like, the very back page. We took out 60, better than 65 tons of garbage. We took out over 10 tons of concrete, so over 75 tons of junk was taken from this place. Total cost is about 16,000, I'm still adding some man-hours and some other time in there. I suspect we'll come in about 17, we estimated it at about $20,000. Site was cleaned up in about four days, we found no bones, we found none of the things that we thought we might find there. But we did get the site cleaned up and it went to the landfill and our contractor did a very good job on us. We have a group of about five or six contractors that always come to our bid proposals and we, we've gotten a pretty good relationship with them over the years, so.
Yeah, I saw the photo of that firefighter entering there and I wasn't too sure he had enough protection to go in there.
Uh, it got to the point where we wouldn't go in there without, without the sheriff's office. We've also asked them to put their hours in here. Inspectors would stand at the front driveway and take pictures because there was a scarecrow in there with a knife stuck in it. You know, it was just that kind of a thing. Lot of arrests were made there. Officer Sergeant Kimlinger from the SO brought this to our attention and, you know, when he showed us the amount of arrests that have come out of that place, it was just time to go in there and clean it up. We have two or three other places like this that are on our radar right now, we'll be making presentations to the board, yourself, to go forward and clean some of this up. I can tell you that the people that live there, they're somewhere else now. They didn't vanish, so they're somewhere else.
Put a cell tower up there now.
Excuse me?
Put a cell tower up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can we lean these costs to clean up against the property?
Yes, we have, we've done all of that. We're currently still, we have a lease pendants on the property now, letting them know that something has occurred and we're still adding up bills. And I said, we're, we're about 15, 16, and it might go up to $17,000. I, I still have the bill from the sheriff's office yet to, yet to go. But they did stand by, we had to get warrants to go in here. This was a case that, gosh, there's, you know, I, I've been doing this a long time and the learning curve, it's always new. The guy died on us, okay? We had all of the paperwork ready to go. And we're, we're letting the bid out, okay? We're, we're there. One of our local contractors got it, we're doing a walkthrough, and the lady says, well, didn't you know the property owner passed away yesterday? And they took him out, he was living in one of the campers there, and they took him out, 53 years old. And, so we had to start the process over again. We had to find the heirs. I, I want to give county council a pat on the back. How do, how do you find heirs to a dead guy? I just don't know. Well, they called up the morgue and they found out who picked up the body. And they went through that process to go through tracking all of that stuff down. That sleuth kind of stuff is, is not my forte, but it, county council certainly helped us out, we got our warrants, we got everything ready to go. Ironic thing, here we have a pile of garbage and it reminds me of Alice's Restaurant, the old song from Alice's Restaurant. And it, we had to fence the site, just in case someone would come on it after we got a warrant. It's just garbage, but we had to fence the site, so there's additional $600 cost required by the warrant. We did get a warrant for 10 days to clean the site up, it took about five days to get the site completely cleaned up. Interesting one.
How long had he, how long of the accumulation had been occurring?
You know, it, it, the other two properties to the east, to the, to either side of it are, don't appear to be occupied or not fully occupied to me full-time by people, and, and it just got away from everybody. I, I don't know how long it started, but they started dumping in the back, they actually dumped into the little river that runs behind Success Drive there. And the first fire was when we were notified of it and we got ahold of Kimlinger and the fire chief from that, for the fire, the captain from that area, started identifying, and we started working on it at that time. We probably have 40 or 50 staff hours in going out there, hanging notices, and they pass us away and we start all over again. But we did have the next of kin who just got out of prison, and he claimed no rights to it, but there was a deed of trust that we went back and, and had to notify all of the people concerned with the deed of trust. So it was quite interesting.
Tell us a little bit about your new code compliance guy because I'm impressed-
Excuse me?
Your new code compliance guy, tell us a little bit about him.
Hector?
Code compliance, don't you have an ex-law enforcement guy that goes out and-
Oh, you know, well, for our medical marijuana, we have Michael Grove, he's ex-highway patrolman, retired. He did primarily property theft, vehicle theft, and we've got him working medical marijuana. We've also hired additional retiree from the Highway Patrol, Edward Jacobowski, who's doing our vehicle abatement, and we've just put him on full-time as vehicle abatement, and he's also a backup building inspector. He's starting to get, he's just got his first certificate as a building inspector and, and we're moving the staff forward into that. We're, we're trying to keep them as building and zoning inspectors because we do the zoning as well. Your, the PSP that you did for the trucking company, that was one of our cases that we brought forward, the people didn't know, we've worked with them, and they came here. I consider that to be a success. I consider that to be a success. They've gotten all their proper permits, they've come through you, the neighbors have all been notified, instead of just having a bootleg business in there. We have, we have, we have more to go, and we will continue to pursue these, so.
One thing I have to say about Dennis is he's not, he's not putting people out of business, he tries to work with them, and it's not, it's not unreasonable, but if it doesn't work, then, you know, it has to be demolished, so. Thank you, Dennis, for your dedication.
Thank you, guys. Thanks, take care. Thank you.
Good presentation, we'll move on to planning director update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, two very quick points. First, I want to thank you for your discussion, deliberations, and patience. We had a number of challenging cases today, and we really appreciate and compliment you for the way that you wrestle with those issues, and we want to thank you for that. Our job is to organize the information, present the evidence, provide recommendations, and then you, as the decision makers, exercise your discretion, and I want to compliment you for that. Secondly, you've just heard another great presentation from our building official, we'd like to continue this process of giving you the presentations with regard to e-planning, development, enforcement issues as we go along, so you are kept in the loop, if you will, with regard to really what we're doing. We're moving aggressively, we're moving rapidly, we're getting a great many things done. For example, when Dennis took over, there were about twelve hundred active cases in code enforcement. Two or three hundred is an acceptable workload for us to process on a fiscal year basis. So based upon the retirement of the cases and the addition of new cases, we think the adequate workload is between two and three hundred, and that's what Dennis is managing right now very, very well. So with that, all I can say is thank you and happy holidays.
I just have one question, Mr. Spata. And I'm sure there is, but maybe the public isn't aware, there's a venue or an avenue for people to call and report circumstances like we see in this thing here?
The answer is yes, we have a zone phone whereby any member of the public can, can register any kind of concern, complaint, or ask a question, and we have our building permit center that has a staff there that goes through that every day, and, and the request is to respond every day, if not by the next day. So yes, there is an avenue, we do have a telephone number, I don't remember it right now, but we do have it posted on our website, and we can announce that or put it in our agenda.
Right, no, just, just so that it was available to, easily available to the public, so that they could get some action or-
Because even if they, that's a very good question, Commissioner, even if someone just calls the general service number, they would be referred to that zone phone, so that is manned by folks that know something they have to respond to quickly.
I'd like to ask Velma, what do we have on our agenda before the next meeting? And then we have one meeting in December, correct?
We have one meeting in December, and November twenty-seventh meeting, we have three items so far.
Okay.
And a presentation by Mr. Benjamin Kimble.
Oh, yeah. Okay, does anybody else like to contribute anything to the benefit of the good? If not, meeting adjourned.